Okay, ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the Scottsburg Common Council on this November the fourteenth of the year 2022 of our Lord's. We begin by calling our council to order. We'll do that. And first thing we do is have prayer for the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you don't mind, we'll stand. I'll have the prayer, but we'll see the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we come before you this evening on this fourteenth day of November. Thank you, Father, for the day you have given unto us. It's been a day that many have been born and many have passed away. So, Father, it has been a day of both joy and mourning, but it's been a day unique to this world. Father, as the sun came forward this morning, as a groom coming from his chambers and sets the scene. So, Father, we thank you for each day, but it's never taken for granted, but to praise you for each day you've given to us. Thank you, Father, for the city of Scottsburg. Thank you for the state of Indiana. Thank you, Father, for the United States of America. Father, you've used this country for your own purpose, and we thank you for it. Give us wisdom this evening. Give us a time, Father, we can just rejoice in you. Father, we rejoice to hear about Krista's daughter and Krista and how you have intervened to give her a length of days. How you've given man the ability to be able to do these amazing operations, Father. Now, you've opened man's mind to be able to do these things. So we rejoice in his goodness. We rejoice in her health and in her life. So, Father, we just pray you bless her and continue healing with her. Be with us this evening. Just then we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next thing on our agenda this evening is the goal called by our clerk, Reg. Jan Harden.
Mayor Amick.
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Bill Hugland.
Here.
Rick Mans.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Ross.
Here. We're all in county council. The next thing is our approval of minutes for the October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. We're entertaining a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Let's see if we have questions or changes.
Make a motion for presentant.
Presentant makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Chris Albertson, seconds. Any questions? Bring down all papers. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Christian Evans, thank you very much. The next thing we have on our agenda tonight is the public comment hearing. This, the Scottsburg City Council accepts public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. These persons will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. If anyone here this evening would like to come forward.
I do. You go first. Okay. Hi, hello, for y'all, Bill Doby. His name's Adam Bomer. That's a Johnny Bell earlier from the council. Requested information on the fiber build-out status for the county. When moved here, when looking to buy a house here December of two thousand twenty, was told that the fiber build-out for my area would be complete and turned on by June twenty-one. However, we're a year and a half past that at this point. And every time I call to get an update, I'm just told, your area is next. And so I work in, work from home, which my spouse does too, and I work in a very heavy internet job, cybersecurity for instance. So I was curious if there was an update or timeframe built out or funding constraints that may be hindering the build-out of the area. But take that, if all y'all haven't even followed that way, or there's any comments that you would like to research and then come back, fully understand respect that.
Yeah, I can try to find out for you about what we can do for you out that way. Do you have fiber going up to Lexington, Indiana? So we'll see how close we are, what we'd have to do to get that accomplished to be able to perform the jobs you need to do.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that very much. Having in your email I did see today reference something about the funding. Just to be clear, it looks like you had stated that the city council, you may have heard that the city council has canceled or re-appropriated the funds for the fiber build-out. I'm not aware of that. Just wanted to be clear on that.
That was just something that I heard, and so I just wanted to bring it up, if that was the case.
Well, I just want to make sure for my standing too with other council, we have no intentions on doing anything other than moving forward with fiber build-out.
Right, right. And I understand with COVID setbacks, infrastructure or shipping, whatnot, items have come hard to get. But also know if we do have the backend built out from working in the cyber industry and it's already hooked up, we're looking at lifecycle issue then, right? Like if things are already hooked up and things aren't functioning, we're plugged up, we're going to hit the end of life for those devices and security, whatnot, before we can even get hooked up to the council. But I'm not, anyone telling anyone how to do their job or anything like that. It's just things I think about from a security standpoint, right?
Sure. I think the mayor will check into it for you, but there's not been, like, not re-appropriated or canceled any funding.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
This is Jill Baker back here. Adam, if you wouldn't mind to give her your address, or I can call you tomorrow and meet your address to see exactly where you're at and how far you are away from our line out there.
I think everyone kind of knows where I live right now, but no.
I'm the one that doesn't. I'm sorry, Bill.
No, no, more than that. Pass that along.
I have it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Noah?
My name is Sandy Owens. I have a couple buildings up there on the square.
Anyone come up?
Oh, where do you want me to come to? Where do you want me to come?
Just right, right in there, get the rest of the city council. There you go.
I'll start, Anne. I'm Sandy Owens. I own a couple buildings on the west side of the square. Back in June, I put a new renter here upstairs. And when he called me on June the eleventh, I said he was doing laundry and the mowings were acting up. Then they called me back and said, oh, I think everything's fine. On June the twelfth, I went in to my office on a Sunday and I had about two inches of water on my floor. I immediately called a plumber. On Monday, I called your street superintendent. He said, you can check into it. He got back and said there was nothing wrong with any of the street. And four days later, the plumbers found out that the problem was in the alleyway in the back. So heavy equipment has been back there and has crushed, have crushed the pipes. I've approached and had two conversations with the mayor over it. He seems to think that that's not the city's problem. I have approached my insurance company and others, and I just want to put this on record in case other buildings have stuff up there or where do I go with this? Because they are indicating to me that the city even not doing anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else this evening? Hearing nothing, then we'll go on to new business. Our first thing on our agenda this evening is twenty twenty-two dash R dash six, a preliminary declaration, resolution designating an economic revitalization area and approving a tax abatement project for GIM, Tocasen. So we have, we have our One Southern Indiana here. We have Chris Gibbs with us as well this evening. So, hopes can you come forward?
Good evening, Mayor Amick and council members. Thank you all for your time this evening. Thank you so much. I'm Anne Keller, and I'm the Senior Director of Business Development at One Southern Indiana, the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Organization for Clark and Floyd Counties. And as you may know, just a bit of background, Scott County Commissioners have a contract with One Southern Indiana to provide certain economic development activities for the county with efforts to attract new businesses and grow existing businesses among the key goals. Now, I'm happy to be here this evening with a client who is looking to establish a new business in the city of Scottsburg, and I'm delighted to be here with him. Chris Gibbs is the native of Eastern Kentucky, and his base of operations is in Laurel, where he operates GIM Incorporated. And the proposed business here within the city of Scottsburg would be a spinoff of his existing business, but it would be a new business, not one that he is moving here from another community elsewhere. And this marks the first time One Southern Indiana has brought a new business attraction project to Scottsburg. And certainly, Wendy and Chester, our longtime president and CEO, has a large role to play in that effort as well. Thank you. Pending approval by city council members, Chris is interested in acquiring the former Tocasen USA building at ten ten West Weir Road on the west side of the city. Of course, I'm sure you're all familiar with that property. He would use that building and property, which comes with eighty-two acres and it's three hundred and ten thousand square feet, for a new manufacturing facility. And as I think all of you know, the building and property has not been in full use for some years. This is all pending the approval of local and state incentives. And of course, we're here tonight to request local incentives. Chris's proposed business here in Scottsburg would manufacture a product that is used in the construction industries, specifically to strengthen the materials used in production of bridges. But the southern has applications to stadium projects and other construction projects, and he's happy to answer questions about that. This project and product greatly reduces the amount of time involved in production. And he can answer questions about that, how it can potentially significantly lessen the amount of time that a bridge project, for example, is underway. The product is currently manufactured in South Carolina, and with this endeavor, he proposes bringing production here to the United States for the first time. Chris plans one hundred and thirty-five total jobs at the facility based in over five years. The average wage, average wage is projected to be thirty-five dollars an hour, which is significantly above the current Scott County average wage of nineteen dollars and change an hour. Chris would employ welders, injection technicians, fabricers, painters, operators of cranes and forklifts, engineers, and other skill sets among that total of one hundred and thirty-five positions. He evictions hiring to begin next month and initial operations to begin after the first of year. Mr. Gibbs has proposed a grand total investment of eighteen million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars at the property over a period of several years. We are coming to you today to request tax abatement on a portion of that total investment. Of the total of more than eighteen million dollars, we request local abatement on one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in personal property, which is primarily machinery, equipment, and some IT hardware. And then the actual abatement amount for the city would be forty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars over five years. In addition, we respectfully request abatement on four million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in real property, which accounts for Chris's lease-to-own agreement with the entire property and the owner there today. He would take full ownership of the property in two thousand twenty-six. The actual abatement amount for the city would be five hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars over ten years. So to reiterate, the personal property abatement request is for five years. The abatement request for real property is over ten years, which is typical of the state of Indiana. I'm happy to provide additional information based on an economic impact statement that we recently had conducted, specifically since this is the first time we have brought a business attraction project to Scottsburg or Scott County. I'm happy to provide information about that if you like. But without further ado, I'm here to respectfully request your consideration of Chris's request for tax abatement. And please note, if you decide to go forward with the abatement and the local incentive, the state of Indiana, the state, is prepared to offer up to one point nine million dollars in edge tax credits, which can jump to set successful job creation of the one hundred and thirty-five jobs at above-average county wages. He would not receive the state tax credits until he approves he's hired Indiana residents as his employees. So Chris is here to answer any questions, or I'm here to answer any questions or take comments if you might have. We are grateful to have this opportunity and are respectful of your time.
Well, Chris, I live in the neighborhood, right across from there. Okay? And so I, I'm excited to see the building no longer going to deteriorate. I'm happy about that. But some neighbors have asked me, kind of what's, you know, before the factory was pretty quiet when it was, when it was K-Cor. It wasn't loud. It wasn't, you know, polluting, that kind of thing. So people have asked me kind of what, and I said I knew some kind of sort of construction.
Yeah, it wouldn't be anything any more intense than what the company was doing there prior. I mean, it's going to be traditional welding. The product we'll be producing is called SPS, simple words for most country people, sandwich plate system, okay? And it's take two pieces of steel and between those pieces inject a resin that is made by BASF, and that hardens. And when it hardens, it creates a product stronger than concrete. And then it's about seventy-five percent lighter than concrete. Now, having somebody here that's from outside of Liverpool, even, Keith Galway, you guys will pronounce his name like I do, Galway, but you know, you see how it's spelled. So Keith is the only person in the United States that can operate the machinery. And he'll be here to train people and all that. So if somebody knocks on your old door, first responders, don't keep him out of town. Attorney-wise, you know, we need to get all kinds of full-time documents because we want to keep Keith here forever. And he'll be the person that trains all the local citizens in a lot of areas. But basically, so we take those two pieces of steel, we put a weld around them, it injects, and it creates this product. There's other things that are incurred with the product as far as grilling and how it attaches. But you know, when I was, I had the opportunity, if you looked down upon that, I think that's pretty much what Willie Daniels told me at the electric company called Highway Thirty-One Bridge, okay? So Highway Thirty-One Bridge has been shut down since, what, June? Which is not fun for anyone. So, you know, and I appreciate the mayor praying that for my daughter, he was prayed for. She had open-heart surgery Friday. Pace maker surgery today. So if I scannadle quickly, it's not a disrespect to you guys. It's to get back to the hospital. And that's why I'm bundled up too, because the place is so cold. But if you, the best way to explain the advantages of this, and you know, I would normally probably have a whole lot of catchy things to say, but I know the mayor, you guys, will be able to come up with stuff. You know, they could be new slogans for Scottsburg moving into the future. You know, we bridge America together or whatever, you know? But if you take this and you look at the construction of this bridge at the shutdown time, where, where the product makes the biggest impact is the fact that, you know, they got to close these bridges to start the work, okay? So with the SPS product, we're made in panels, and we have our own engineers. Everything's all in-house. But we can project the bridge, and so the panels will be pre-made inside the building, ready to go. So before a bridge is ever shut down, it's already ready to be built back. So, and I'll pass out some stuff to you guys to take home tonight. So when that bridge was first shut down, it would basically be demo. You can think of the concrete pillars or whatever you see in the center of the creek and on each side. Then you just take, and the SPS is seventy-five percent lighter. So you know, structurally, it's all going to be tested, and most likely, all be ready to go. So then we would install steel plates on top of those concrete pillars, okay? Then we would have the connections, which are just bolts typically, could be welded, but bolts, it's just installed by crane. You put asphalt over it. So most bridges are going to be forty-five days in order from shutdown.
Wow.
Okay? So it's a big impact. The product has existed for twenty years. It's been primarily in Canada and in Europe. They tried the states. There are some bridges that were done in the states, probably in O-six in Texas and so forth. But one of the big obstacles was it's not made in wear, you know? So our first thing is, just like any process in the United States, the first process is always government approval, correct? So what we would do is we would begin the process of going to the DOT, DOT engineers, get their blessing down. SPS is already approved in all the United States, okay, as a product for bridges. Some of the key things, just for you guys, number-wise, and I know I went off topic to your question, it won't be any more than what it was before, probably.
That's all. That was kind of me.
To get it all out there while I'm on the road, in this, just the state of Indiana has seven hundred and twenty million dollars worth of bridges right now that is classified in the preliminary stages of engineering. So it's been sent out there for everybody to look at. Not awarded, nothing like that. Scott County here has two bridges in that classification, which total over four billion. Total bridges in that classification in Indiana is one hundred and ninety-eight. So again, it's such an open market for us, and you know, we know it'll be very successful. We know what it does job-wise. We know we pay a lot more money than a lot of people do for the employees. And I think that's the greatest thing about this, is what it does economically to the community. One of the other things that I guess I'll highlight, because I don't know if I can talk this much, but Anne knows I can talk. Two primary things, how did we end up at this? My structural engineer had a relationship with a guy that had worked with this company over years. They kept asking me about, because there's a lot of other products that go with this. Like we've made, we've already got projects in different areas that we do floor panels, what we just call flat floor panels, that are similar to the bridges. And what that does is that replaces concrete on second, third, fourth level floors. So we will be targeting parking garages. You guys don't see in the newspaper that you got at Indianapolis, University of Indiana, with how many billions of dollars on a forty-acre campus, you know, for the new hospital project, so we can do a lot of products for them. But, so they had, they kept coming to me about making the steel, making the steel, doing this. And I was like, well, where are you going to sell it? You know, if you ain't got nothing to sell it, you know, not that you're wasting my time, but I got other things to do. I don't want to spend time pricing on something that's not real. I go for immediate cash flow. I go for immediate jobs. We go for immediate startups. That's why your all's approval is very important, you know, we're ready to go. But the, the thing was, as I looked at it, was okay, we can do something with it, but it's got to be done in the United States. So are you guys willing to get over, you know, the control of the sales marketing and all that to us? And let us drive the ship per se. So. And that's another area that's used as maritime. That's where Keith has spent tons of his time putting it on ships and replacing the hulls and government stuff. One of the other products that you can put in your mind, I hope we can develop and produce here, which is close to anybody's heart. The mayor asked me how many kids you got. I said, I got seven. You know, big family. But on the maritime side of it, Keith and them will produce panels that they will put over doors on ships. And so SPS has already done all the ballistics testing to where, always will go through it, okay? So one of the products we're going to design on right now is to give you all a free look into the future and to know we're in the process of designing security doors that would go over the classrooms with bulletproof glass, and it would secure the classrooms for the students and the teachers. And that, that would be something that I hope we would bring, you know, bridges and all these other things, that's to generate cash flow, a thing like that, you know?
And as a teacher, I appreciate that.
Yeah. But any other questions? Like I said, I'll pass out some stuff if you have any questions. We're excited for the opportunity and hope you guys will consider helping us.
And don't you love an entrepreneur? I'll make that motion. The motion for Rick Mans?
Is this, do we need two separate declaratory resolutions, Joe?
Absolutely. So this is the preliminary. We will then be able to have the public hearing due to notice required, it will be on December twelve. Also, that current result of this meeting, so we have the average eyes, and then have the here on December twelve. And after that here, we can take the final last one, confirm or break resolution. So on that note, there are a couple of things in the preliminary that's noted, and One Southern Indiana is working on. The forms that I have submitted to, that we've received, like circulating, you guys, on the real problems. And what we need once time of the current property is the actual tax. Because they're going to work on that, clean that up. We've got a note in that in our preliminary, but we'll finalize that.
So it's December twelve, we can read that?
That is correct. So December twelve, we can finalize it, make any changes or anything that would be needed. One other thing to note, I know we were given some numbers on the abatement. So everything on the abatement, let's just, let's say for even numbers, it's currently assessed at one million dollars. And they, with all the work they do there now, it's assessed at two million dollars. So the abatement is on that new million dollars, so by the schedule that we set forth. So there is no abatement. You can't abate the current assessed. It's all the new investment that would be abated.
So it's, yeah, so the original is going to be still be taxed.
Correct. So as far as those numbers, there is no, actually, there's no out-of-pocket cost to us. It's like, down the road, you're actually, you see more than that from the city.
More making investment.
Exactly.
I'll second Chris. Well, is it for the real property or for the foot?
There is, there is a request on that.
I know, but then people argue how there is, there would not be part of the property taxes. There's nothing. I'm saying this resolution will cover all the requests.
Yeah, sure does.
So we have a motion by Rick Mans, seconded by Christian Evans. Have you go forward? Go on, Mary. The clerk.
I want you to, well, you're committed. You can do it. Declaratory.
Declaratory resolution. There hasn't been any economic revitalization. So any questions, comments about this? Bring down all people. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Evans. Thank you very much. Welcome home.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all for your excuses.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Glad to meet you, Scottsburg, One Southern Indiana. I feel like I've seen you in the past, and I'm glad you're here.
And y'all need to remember that Anna and Wendy are great, so. They were very forceful. Anna was very forceful. And yeah, when we get started with the stuff, that's when we get you guys to come over and go through and see all the different things and see how Keith makes this place work.
This picture, want to take it with a drone, will you?
No.
I'm not allowed to discuss that. I was doing research. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Your pleasure. The next thing on our agenda this evening is Resolution Twenty Twenty-two dash R dash seven, a resolution accepting certain streets previously dedicated to the city of Scottsburg. Jill, you want to say anything about that?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So Jill has gotten several of the community crossing grants, and the streets that you can use the grant money to pay must be on the state's inventory for the city. As a result of that process, we have noticed there are being crossed several streets that we all would assume are city streets have been adopted formally into our system. The state says otherwise on several. So this resolution is a polite message to the state of the
of the former, the dedication of these streets to the city that has previously been done, as you can see in the exhibit over the years, and this is our formal resolution to appease the state and allow us to, uh, paint these streets with our, um, funds that we would receive today.
We have more streets than just the ones you've seen. Uh, but these have already been plowed, and those streets have been emptyly plowed, go forward. Once they're on the state's red star inventory, we can then apply, uh, community crossing grant funds to pay those for improvement as well. So that's why it's imperative for us to get some of these areas in. And we've had to just look at more laid work on several of these streets to be able to get them planted and such, we can come before this. But this is the beginning.
And there may be some more out there that aren't plowed? That just haven't came across our radar? These were three quick ones that we were aware of, had them plowed and, uh, moving on, moving forward on now. Trying to hopefully work with Jill's timeline, but she's got to get this stuff to an end soon.
Christian's one that's on, I mean, his tile score is not, is not on the state's inventory, so we're, we're working to get these things all counted so we can go forward.
I, I have some other ones too that I, I'd like to look at, so I, I'm glad we're on to this process.
Chuck Rosencrantz's motion approved. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash R dash seven, this is our second. First officer's second, so any questions about this? Turned out all people say aye?
Aye.
Close line sign? End. Thank you.
Jay, that will, will be recorded. Get that resolution recorded, some of those owners are paying two dollars, one fifty cents in property taxes, it's still showing.
Okay.
So we'll record that.
The next thing I would just say to you is Clarissa Miller, this is the one, welcome.
Thank you. So I realized I did not send this infographic. You should have a copy of our plan, but there is an infographic about Pulse Point. Um, I didn't send that, right? Um, so, as I was here before, we talked about the opioid settlement funds that are coming into the county and how those have essentially restricted funds and then unrestricted funds. So Cease, the Scott County Partnership and Thrive all sat down together and created plans for, or proposals of plans for those different fund amounts at the county and then both the Austin City and Scottsburg City Council. So the proposed plan for Cease, um, we're looking at implementation of Pulse Point. The county did raise some concerns, just to tell you all, I guess there's some liability concerns and then maybe a question for you and Zach to talk about, um, because I'm not an attorney, um, but there, I guess there's some concern that if, it's so essentially a call would come into nine one one and then a bear, a responder would be able to get a push notification on their phone, so we'll, we'll pretend like I'm a doctor, right? And Bill has a heart attack and I'm within a mile or two from Bill, I can respond to his home faster than EMS could potentially respond. And the hope with that is to be able to, to save different lives, and so that would be overdose responses, that would be cardiac arrest, that would be different kinds of life-saving measures. And the responders would be people that are meant to respond, right? I'm not actually a doctor, you don't want me doing any kind of life-saving measures on you, but someone who is trained in that profession could be able to respond to those. Um, so the county did have some concerns about liability. So the first year, which initially the funds were supposed to be available to the city in November and the different municipalities. Somebody's collecting interest somewhere, so now maybe January, uh, is kind of whatever they're saying that these funds are supposed to be. So we created a proposal for the first three years. So year one, we are requesting ten thousand dollars from the city council of that abatement money, which can only be spent in those restricted areas for implementation of Pulse Point. Should the county opt not to implement Pulse Point, then we would request that ten thousand dollars be provided for expansion of our grant program for Cease. So Cease grants are available for three different pillars. One is a prevention pillar, so you will have some prevention programming in the schools. That's the kind of thing that would fund. We have a treatment and intervention category, so that would be things like getting people into substance abuse treatment or peer support services, those kinds of things. And our third strategy is justice and law enforcement. So we found some guys that might be sitting back there to do things like DEA jerk take back day, and they do some different education, like are different PDs and sheriff's departments. So we would just request that if Pulse Point is not at the county level, that the same ten thousand dollars be requested, but instead for the grant funds. And then the money, we have a big pool of money that comes out the first year and then it tables down. So the two subsequent years for our through year plan, we would be requesting three thousand dollars for the Cease grant program. Do y'all have any questions?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you give your impression on the Pulse Point itself?
Okay, yes. So Pulse Point is an app, so basically a, a call comes into this branch and they can send out a notification, like someone is called in unresponsive. So they can send out a notification in a system that the county would have. And then that system would push to first responders, like so if someone is, is a registered parent, they're EMD, they're, uh, an EMT, therapeutic, you know, whatever kind of like licensing and credentialing. So then they would receive a push notification on their phone that they could then respond. So we would also put different aid stations throughout the county in, in ten locations, like some of the remote areas, so that we can get A U D out to people, we can get naloxone, something that would happen before first responders made attention, they get there. We know that our first responders are doing the best that they can, but the world's on fire lately, so, and they're, they're trying to keep up.
I understand you, is it just a past, is it?
It's, it's just a, a presentation. You all don't have the money.
Right.
So realistically, we don't expect to vote, um, it's just the, the presentation to be able to ask questions. We're happy to, to amend whatever we need to, to come back, um, however it does want to.
Did the county give you an idea when they would respond?
The county said that they would make a vote when they had the money, because it doesn't make sense to vote on money that we don't have.
No, I know, but are they, well, I guess my question is, are they interested in implementing it, because that would help us.
Is the county going to get all the money or will part come to the city?
Part will come to the city. So I actually have the numbers, so this, the city of Scottsburg, um, of the abatement share, which has to be spent in the way that the federal government has proposed, so the, the document that you guys talked about each of our different areas. Um, so that is twenty-three thousand four hundred and ninety that the city of Scottsburg will receive.
And that is just for next year?
That's for twenty twenty-two, um, which now is gonna be paid off probably in January. Um, and then in twenty twenty-three, it dropped significantly, so it's four thousand two hundred and three dollars and fifteen cents. And then in twenty twenty-four, it's five thousand two hundred and eight. And you do have unrestricted funds, um, that are also coming in as this, so those, those funds, the county had expressed an interest in, say, like, trying to, um, do some different things for EMS, because EMS has had to kind of eat a lot of cost, I think, over the last couple of years, and so that was one of the things that they were looking at. So in twenty twenty-two, that's ten thousand and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents that you guys could use for whatever. Um, now those numbers are shifting, uh, so they'll probably shift slightly, but not, I mean, it's really plus and minus, uh, maybe a couple hundred dollars. So just to give you kind of an idea, and I'm, I'm happy to give you these sticky numbers so that you.
So will they, will they just be getting with us to put that in our handles, be coming from the state auditor? Do you know how to expect this funding?
I don't. Um, honestly, I can tell you that there's a, um, a website for the opioid settlement and it may have more information, but it can give you the exact, um, the exact what it is. Because what I am seeing is that it's not been that well communicated, and so I don't really even know whose accounts this money is in at this time.
That's gonna be done, okay.
Yeah, um.
Any counties around us participating in this?
All, I think almost all counties in Indiana opted in. Um, so like Clark County, I was getting like four point eight million dollars, um, Scott County.
Two point three.
Yeah, so Scott County's getting two point three million, um. All right, it is. I'm just gonna hand this to you.
Can I send it to myself or?
Oh, yeah.
Just send it to eight one two, five two eight, five four six four.
Yeah, they've not been very transparent about how the money is gonna come down. Um, or really, they keep giving dates and then shifting those dates, so we're looking at January at this point is what they're saying, but so, yeah, so I don't know.
Now I get your content, yeah.
Yes.
And I guess we can tell a little bit, the, uh, Indiana Attorney General's office has been, has concerted themselves into lead on this for a couple of years, and that's where a lot of the, uh, confusion has revolved.
You mean, you mean they got borders involved?
And politicians?
And politicians.
Well, and what's interesting is initially the money was supposed to go to the LCCs, like Cease, to be able to disperse, because city council, I'm assuming then a few are prevention experts. Um, so it doesn't necessarily make sense for you all to figure out exactly how to spend this money in this very specific narrow window that they provide, so. So that's why we tried to get, our, our organization represents thirty-six different organizations with the county, so we're hoping that we can be able to use those funds for the great.
And since you're staying here, because I would love, because, again, I'm, as local council for Austin and the county, in the several of these proceedings we were given for the state of recording, the state is to receive sixteen million unrestricted and then thirty-seven and a half million in the abated share for twenty twenty-two alone. Is there any just true direction on what, what that's, if you guys are in line for that or what the state is?
There's not. So, so honestly, we are ahead of the game. We've been in meetings with LCCs across the, the state and people are really spinning their wheels because there's no communication about this. So my guess is the behavioral health commission came out with a report in September basically saying the state of our mental health services in the state are terrible. And so they, they proposed all these different provisions, two things like, you know, health centers and, and different things. So my guess is they're going to use those funds in the way of, in the behavioral health commission, but that's just, that's just an assumption. I, I was hoping you had it.
I have.
Any other questions?
I appreciate it. Hey, I think you missed it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next thing I would just say to you is permission to close the city building for an hour and a half on November twenty-first this year and also December the ninth for employee holiday dinners. Uh, from eleven thirty to one o'clock. And you're all invited as well, now that you're all invited, we will count them as well, so.
Hour and hour for lunch seems pretty. I'll make the motion to approve an hour and a half for lunch.
Second. Christian Evans makes the motion. I would just like the school board to, uh, listen to this, to our teachers. I'll get the tapes for you, Eddie. Who made the second, Chris?
I'll say.
Everybody else just made the second. Any other questions, comments? Turned out all people say aye?
Aye.
Close line sign? End. Thank you very much. So the next thing you have on the agenda this evening is a mid-American sized part of the classroom fee schedule. Uh, we have Tyson who's had several, uh, inquiries about coming in and doing some welding, um, other companies, and so we've put this schedule for you, for you to look over.
Is this needing, um, action today?
I, I don't think it does.
Just to look over? Oh, the only question I had is the two negotiable line items. Who's the negotiator and what body or what person? I guess that was the main question I had. I know very little about those two billions, so, um, I'm not, I want to be the negotiator there, but just out of curiosity to approve it.
And I guess, I, I had a concern as well, I, I thought we had to have an amount in there, you know, if, if, you know, a range of some sort, maybe, maybe I guys can can speak to that, that if, if we were allowed to put just negotiable in there, we could have negotiable across the whole scale. That, well, and I'm not, you know, not, uh, playing just for crazy question, are, are we allowed to, could we live with some kind of range in there?
You know, I was, with my travel today, had not seen this, and I would, I would think the range of sudden now would be.
I think the reason that was put in there is in case he came to you with a lease for a time period and man in front of the board works. Don't know that to be positive, but.
But that would be a separate issue, so I would like to think about, and that for him would be, if this is a rental, this should be just a rental, right? As far as hourly, whatever the other room search, because I'm assuming if we had someone come on some of these other classrooms, who might sign or might entertain at least one of them as well, so. Should be the same as the other one, just as far as the settlement.
Wouldn't this need to be also in a, like an ordinance?
Absolutely.
Yes, does it tell me any fees?
Yes, I think this was. Have we had this before?
Yeah, we would be, we would need a new one to amend it.
Did we have the training center rates structure out? I know we did.
He said he found this in the computer system, so I don't know if it came before you all before, it's before I was here. So I don't, I'm not sure.
I, I, I know we did the event center in some of the classrooms, I, I found that, but I, if we, if we approved a rate schedule for the training center, I, I couldn't find it and I don't remember.
He found it, yeah, he found it when he got there, so I'll have him look into it and we'll look back at the past ordinances and see if we can find it.
I don't, I don't recall ever seeing one without that.
Well, that's okay, we need one.
Yeah.
Let's, uh, let's table this, let me get to Tyson and, and let's get our heads together and we'll come back to you with, uh, with some rates in there for. Uh, the next thing is a really amazing, wonderful thing we have to say. We have the one only, Eric Jones.
Huh? Oh. Can you take us up here to you?
And this is a certificate of appreciation, a certifier that kept Eric Jones awarded, was awarded with the two thousand twenty-two Fire Instructor of the Year Award by the Indiana Fire Chiefs Association.
That's awesome.
Is this not amazing? The city of Scottsburg thanks you for your hours of training firefighters here in Scottsburg as well, all across the state. Your dedication to serve is an asset to our community and to our state. Eric Jones, we thank you so very much. Tell the guys how, what happened here, how you were awarded.
Uh, so every year, there's a, uh, Indiana Emergency Response Conference, which is a, just what it is, it's a training conference for fire and EMS personnel. Sorry, no, unfortunately, there's a little bar.
Yeah, right.
But, uh, um, and it's in Indianapolis every year, and then the Indiana Fire Chiefs Association is the, you know, the, the awards part of the thing. Have different topics, Fire Instructor of the Year, uh, Fire Officer of the Year, uh, heroic recipe of the year, Fire Chief of the Year. There's probably twenty different topics. Uh, in twenty nineteen, I was actually luckily enough to be nominated, didn't win it then, but, uh, this year was pretty neat to, to get.
This year they got a prize.
Yeah, this year. No, it's, it's been, you know, pretty, pretty cool, uh, to, to receive the award, uh, going on, I guess, close to seventeen years in the fire service, so. Uh, for the last twelve years, I've been instructor of that, and for the last eleven years, we've been able to host. And for the last eleven years, we've been able to host a fire academy class, which certifies everybody in firefighter one and two and has an operational level. It's about a four to five month class. We do it every year for the last decade. We've got people from six, seven counties away coming every year, so that's pretty good. They get a chance to start building a training tower. So a lot of good recognition for the department and community and such. And there's other things we do as well in training and stuff, but I mean, that's, it's been, it's been pretty great. It was really neat to see Scottsburg on this, so, yeah.
I'd like for city council to have, gather around here, have our pictures maybe.
I'm actually headed to the game.
Yes. I left the game.
Yeah, I, thank you. I, yeah, that, yo, you left the game?
Yeah.
Mine's B, so they're playing here right now, so.
Yeah, well enjoyed. Can we get a picture?
Yeah, yeah, that's wrong, yeah.
And go around in front and get a.
They can do what they gotta do here. Try and get a, pull it to you.
Seven.
Here, here.
He said, he said. What we need to do.
Oh, there you go.
All right. I'm used to people.
Does he want the EMS up there?
Easy now.
Come on over here, Bill.
Tell me when.
About ten forty. You want EMS up there with you?
Me.
Can we do?
Name or time, three, two, one, open on me.
All right, it's important not to slide. Sucking.
Yeah, I was.
That's, I made it now.
Just see now, Eric, catch the star off hard time.
Well, yeah, I see. I did. That's the many lessons we learned there.
Actually, that's actually different. So you not what not. So to be a firefighter.
Thanks, Eric.
Are we ready for?
Three, two.
We had, I just, I had this one more thing to work on the analysis. Listen, I want to tell you, I neighbors here and we have a resident, two residents over on South First Street that was not on our community crossings grant to pave the road. The road is in bad condition. Just two homes, a home and then a bowl of home next to it. And so we really hadn't paved. So we had a gentleman all there just paved some and I've paved some. So I went out there, put a shirt on, I went out there to pave. So we just turned it in, paved it. And it was gonna take about four single axle truckloads full. After about one and a half, we were, it's just two hundred feet. It's not a long space, just two runs. But we got up out of the trailer and, and Cliff said, and he says, Mayor, this guy's already having a water issue. So I hadn't looked at the road. That was my fault. And the crown was too high. So at this point, I looked at his concrete. His concrete was pitted. So I went and got him out. I said, listen, we're not gonna be able to paint it. I need to take everything up. The hot mix we had, we can put in a hot box and we can heat that up and use it for patches. We didn't lose the asphalt. We didn't take the asphalt up and run it to the back. I told them it's gonna be done this year. But to knock that crown down off that road and then to make it higher on the west side of the road so the water would go all off into the east side where there's a ditch and that it bugs in the middle school. So we'll put it in the side. We'll let you know that I did make a mistake on that. And so we got it fixed. We got it fixed up. Get to pay next year. Other than that, does anybody have anything else? Was it good to see Chris Gibbs tonight? It was a joy and also. You want to say anything, Chris? Christian, about the wire or something like that?
Uh, do we want to, I mean, I think that.
About the wire?
Yeah. Is that something that we wanted to add to redevelopment? When was it? Do?
It was Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It was Tuesday.
Obviously, there's been discussion about the YMCA for some time. City's been involved. I think from the council, I think we talked about it in one of the council meetings a month or so ago, that we as a group weren't necessarily excited about the idea of owning the YMCA and the property. The co-representers from the YMCA, YMCA board come, came to the redevelopment commission to speak to us about basically the partnership, if you will, to have the redevelopment commission come in the form of a donation to help with some of the repairs and the update of the facility. Obviously, they would keep ownership of the building. They would keep it going in its capacity currently. I felt, I know Bill on redevelopment as well. I think unanimously with the five oh bill, we approved to give a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar donation to the YMCA, which would cover the estimated cost of repairs that the Y U, YMCA USA had, yes, had given a quote for. And I don't know exactly what comprises the quote, but it's for a majority of the repairs. It does not include the pool. That is a discussion ongoing, but I think for both of our, for all of our discussions, it could get covered in both places. They would keep the property and its facilities, obviously ongoing operations, and then we would assist from a redevelopment commission standpoint and assisting in that process, but not having ownership. So felt like it was a good compromise all around. It was unanimous support, so moving forward.
When you say the, you operate as it is currently, does that mean with the white chart it is in?
That, that is the plan. The donation was more of, more assistance in their discussion with the YMCA USA to keep the charter, knowing that they have a financial backbone potentially with the redevelopment commission.
So I guess my, my question is more that it's still possible that we, that the charter would remain?
It is possible, but they gave us assurances, even if they weren't reported. They wish we made open, we'd be doing another Scott County Community Center, some event, or whatever name they come up with. But they were going to go forward with the matter. So with those assurances, we felt for the citizens of Scott County, that this is the best possible way to perform.
Could I add from response to, but what Christian said, I did speak with one of the board members and I know they met with our redevelopment on Tuesday and on Wednesday. No, we met on Wednesday and on Thursday they were out in the community with another, who they think is a really, really good prospect for a partner, you know, and that is what they relate to the redevelopment, that they were going to be more active in trying to get community support. So that was, you know, they felt, another board felt positive from their meeting on Thursday also.
I got a little bit of that as well.
Okay.
Same news. And they are, they have a meeting with the Y USA this Thursday. And hopefully have some answers after that.
Chuck, the Y USA did say that unless they had some type of partnership with the city, you definitely. Like only if you're, you have an option, if they can, they could say that, so.
I'm just happy to hear that there's a possibility that the charter would remain. I mean, I know community centers will be fine, but the value of having that is why it's meant to. See if we can save.
And I have to say that I, I really appreciate the compromise. Because I think I'm much more comfortable in this kind of partnership than the city is. The taxpayer being on the board.
Yeah, I think to close on that point, and I totally agree, you know, I felt, and I think I said this in our meeting, that as a redevelopment commission, this is truly redevelopment, right? This is an asset for our city and to utilize those funds in order to redevelop that property and that building and utilize it for its purpose. I think it's what decapitalizes the redevelopment commission. I felt that we did a good job in compromising and getting to the point where we are. So I do know that there's ongoing discussions as well with the elections and so on and so forth, that the county, you know, and some of the other entities, governmental entities would be in discussions. We'll see how that goes, but that is obviously optimistic, so.
Sounds great. So we've had a lot of good news this evening. A lot of good news. What else do we have this evening?
I make more for each chair.